Welcome to the August meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals. Would you please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that are new to the ZBA, our procedure is as follows. The meeting takes place in two parts. During the first half of the meeting, we hold public hearings on each of the applications that are before us. We'll take these in the order that they're found on the agenda. And if you want a copy of the agenda, it's available right up here on the corner. For each item, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, to state their name, and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we will ask the applicant to just very briefly describe why they're here, what kind of a variance, and why they need a variance. Following that, we'll go down the board, and each board member will have an opportunity to ask any many questions that they might have about it. When we finish that, then the floor will be open to any member of the public that wants to address that application, but that application only. We've heard from everyone that wishes to speak on the issue. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the next application. When we've completed all the public hearings, then the second part, the deliberation phase of the meeting, begins. And during that part, there'll be no further, there's no further input from the, from the public since the public hearing has been closed. But you're certainly welcome to stay and to listen to our deliberations if you need to leave. Before we've reached your application, you can call the zoning department in the morning and get the results. For tonight's meeting, we have, our attorney is on vacation, our secretary is on vacation. The two alternates that would normally fill in are also unable to be here, one because of a death in the family, regrettably. And one of our regular members, Betty Bamba, is also absent. According to the bylaws and the codes that regulate the ZBA, the quorum for a meeting is five members, so we, we have a, clearly have a quorum. However, the regulations state that in order to adopt anything, there has to be a minimum of four yes votes. So what that means is that because there are only six of us, the, it will take four out of the six to adopt anything. All right. With, with all of those formalities done, let's turn to the agenda. Item number one, Yun Bing Chen from 33 Hawk Lane. If you would come, come forward.
I'm the contractor for that job. He's supposed to be here.
You know, let's postpone yours and when he comes. It's important that the owner be here. So, item number two, Michael and Lisa Boom of 15 Alex Way. If you would state your name for the record.
I'm Ms. Lisa Boom.
Ms. Boom, do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. So you want to put a shed on your...
Exactly. We're asking for a variance because by definition, the front of a home is defined as where a road is, and our property backs up. We have Alex Way on the front, Vassar Road on the back, so we have two fronts to our home.
Just, we're, we record this, and for some reason, the sound is not... Okay. So... Nope. Uh-oh. I thought I heard something.
Yes.
No.
Yes. The shutdown of the truck. Let's just take a moment.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, this works here. Testing.
Can you hear me now?
You are good. Yep. You might want to just bend the microphone a little bit closer to you there.
All right. How's that?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So we are requesting a variance to define, your, your regulations state that a shed cannot be placed in the front of a home. Because we have Vassar Road to the rear of our property, Alex Way on the front, we technically have two fronts to our home. However, the back of our home is trees from 80 feet to Vassar Road. So it is a perfect location for us, we think, to place a shed so that we can store our tractor and other equipment that we need, so we don't have it stored outside and around the property.
Okay. Carmen, any questions?
No question.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions. That's so far from the road.
Yeah.
And so trees, you'll never, you'll never see it.
Right.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to address the application at 15 Alex Way? All right. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think Mr. Chen is here. Okay. So if you and your contractor both want to come up here? This is item one, 33 Hawk Lane. Okay. If you'd just, if you'd each, you'd state your names?
Yeah, Yun Bing.
Neil Gover.
I'm sorry, your last name?
Gover.
Gover? Okay. Messrs. Chen and Gover, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state of New York.
Yes.
State of New York.
Okay. So, I don't care which one, but somebody want to kind of briefly describe what the project is and why you need a variance?
It's a rear deck on a house.
Okay.
I thought the lines were 20 feet, and they changed them to 10 several years ago. The deck doesn't stick out farther than the house, so it's directly behind it.
Okay. And this is a replacement for, for an earlier deck?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any idea how long that deck has been there? I mean, the original one. It was there when you bought the property?
Yes.
But it'd been there, what? Does it look like it'd been there a long time?
Yeah, it's very old there, but they don't have the, like, certification of occupant for it. That's why we want to lock it down to do everything right. I think it's, it's like 20 feet long for, like, attached to the house.
Okay. Okay. Carmen, any questions?
I have no questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions. That's so far from the road.
Yeah.
And so trees, you'll never, you'll never see it.
Right.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience wish to address the application at 15 Alex Way? All right. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think Mr. Chen is here. Okay. So if you and your contractor both want to come up here? This is item one, 33 Hawk Lane. Okay. If you'd just, if you'd each, you'd state your names?
Yeah, Yun Bing.
Neil Gover.
I'm sorry, your last name?
Gover.
Gover? Okay. Messrs. Chen and Gover, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements that you make may be subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state of New York.
Yes.
State of New York.
Okay. So, I don't care which one, but somebody want to kind of briefly describe what the project is and why you need a variance?
It's a rear deck on a house.
Okay.
I thought the lines were 20 feet, and they changed them to 10 several years ago. The deck doesn't stick out farther than the house, so it's directly behind it.
Okay. And this is a replacement for, for an earlier deck?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any idea how long that deck has been there? I mean, the original one. It was there when you bought the property?
Yes.
But it'd been there, what? Does it look like it'd been there a long time?
Yeah, it's very old there, but they don't have the, like, certification of occupant for it. That's why we want to lock it down to do everything right. I think it's, it's like 20 feet long for, like, attached to the house.
Okay. Okay. Carmen, any questions?
I have no questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 33 Hawk Lane? Okay. If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was easy.
Item number three, Scott and Christina Greco McPeck, 23 Laughlin Lane. Okay. So if you'd just state your name, please?
Scott McPeck.
Mr. McPeck, do you swear to, or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state of New York.
Okay. So, briefly.
Okay. I'm also applying for a variance on a shed on my property that will ultimately be 14, 12, 14 feet closer to the road than the front of my house, but it being really the only place on my property that I could put a shed.
Okay. Carmen, questions?
Okay. When, when we were out there, we, we did see some alternatives, and you, you can clarify whether they are alternative or not?
Sure.
Both on the left side, in, in the, in the back of the property, and also on the right side. And I, I know you have the bee, bee hives there, but this is not, not near septic, is it?
I'm not really sure where the leach field is. I mean, the actual tank is, like, around the middle of the back of the house, about 10 feet out. So I'm not positive where the leach field is. And if I was to put it where those bees are, because of the topography there, that slope, I would have to level that off, so I would have to dig in front. And not to mention, from an aesthetics viewpoint, it would, my wife wouldn't be too happy. Because with the golf course in the backyard, now we have 16 feet of shed blocking that view.
Right.
And, and also, where we would like to put the shed is convenient for bringing in the mowers and all that sort of stuff?
I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
I'm sure it is, but there's aesthetics, too, about having a shed in, in really the, the front yard. That's what it is. And so, on, on the right-hand side, to the right of the house?
Right.
What is the issue there, that you could not put a shed there?
Well, aside from it being close to the neighbor's yard with no trees or anything to, to sort of mask it, our drain pipe for the bottom of the driveway runs through there, and the leach field, I, I know for sure the leach field is going to be over on that side.
You know it's going to be there, right? Tell me again what the problem is with, with the bee hives?
Well, several things, I guess. There's no other place for me to put the bees, the bee hives. I can't put it on the other side of the property because there's, there's children there. I just wouldn't feel right putting it over, although I'm sure they'd be perfectly safe. I wouldn't want them to worry about it. With that slope, in order to put the shed on there, I would have to excavate some for the front of the shed in order to get enough flat spot for it. And I don't know where that leach field is. And, I mean, quite frankly, for us aesthetically, we, we just, we wouldn't want it there. If, if that was our only option, I probably wouldn't have a shed, I guess.
But, but the, the shed, you would have it lifted, right? I mean, you wouldn't have to, to excavate for the shed. I mean, it's, you usually put it on, on, on some forms there.
Well, it has to be on stone or cement, right? I think it has to be on crushed stone, isn't it? At least? If not cement?
Yeah, there has to be some kind of a path.
Kind of a footing. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it would have to be leveled off somehow. I, I guess I didn't give it an awful lot of consideration because for me, it's, it's not really an option for me to put it there.
Mm-hmm.
I, I guess I considered it as far as how you folks would consider it, but I, I really didn't think that was much of an option to go back there for the things I stated.
Right.
Yeah.
I have no further questions right now.
Christine?
So the shed would be behind those trees, so you really wouldn't see it completely from the road?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, those trees are going to stay there on the side, on the front, and obviously all those woods to the west of it. And again, bringing it back as far as I can, which, it's only going to give me, you know, maybe two to four feet behind the front of the house. It's also lower, the elevation is lower than the house, so if, if you're coming up from the east side, west on Laughlin, you're not seeing an awful lot of that shed. To mention, we're, you know, for our own sake as well, it, it's going to sort of blend in, it's going to be a color that blends in as much as possible. We, we don't want it to stand out in the least bit.
Okay. That's all, no more questions.
Okay. Art?
Are you going to be driving up to the shed? It's not a, it's not a garage, it's a true shed, right?
Absolutely not. No.
Okay. And the property falls away where you're going, just behind it, it falls away rather dramatically, I think, right? And you have a pit there?
It does. And since I've lived there, the 10 years or so, I've, I've tried to kind of fill that in a little bit with, you know, leaves and wood chips and all that, kind of take some of that slope out, but it's, it's not the most solid ground on that slope.
So the shed then would go back to the edge of that drop? The back of the shed will be on the edge of that drop, pretty much?
As far back as will possibly accommodate that 12 feet. You know, I'm even thinking, between the house and it, where that little, where it slopes down before it gets flat, if I had to dig into that a little bit to gain a couple of feet?
Gain feet, I mean, back further?
Pulling it back as far as possible.
That would be a nice thing, if you could do that, another couple of feet.
But again, to be, to be fair, we're talking still two to four feet. It's not, it's not going to be eight, it's not going to be eight or 10 feet.
Right, I understand that.
I don't want to deceive you on that.
I'm good.
Okay. Larry?
I have no questions right now.
Okay. Tony?
I have no questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 23 Laughlin Lane?
I have another question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sure.
Shed is going to, what's it going to be made out of? Is it going to look similar to the, I forgot what your house is, your house?
Well, it's stone on the front.
It's not going to be a stone shed, obviously.
No.
What's the shed?
I wish.
Yeah.
It's, it's going to be, actually, I could tell you what the material's called because I forget the name of it. But it, it's going to be like, like a wood siding, sort of. I'll, I'll tell you the exact...
Not going to be Texture 111 or any of that stuff?
No.
Okay. It's going to look like house, regular house siding?
It's going to, it's, I guess, in a sense, like vinyl, but it's not vinyl. It's, um...
And you said...
Duratemp siding. Duratemp.
And you said some kind of a, what, earth color of, for...
Yeah, I mean, we're going to pick the closest, like, one of the darker colors of the stone?
Oh.
With the dark trim.
Okay.
So, you know, as...
Thank you.
...unvisible as possible.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? And there was, no one indicated in, from the audience, they wished to speak, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Item four, Nancy Hildenbrand from 9 Sherwood Road.
Hello.
State your name.
Nancy Hildenbrand.
Ms. Hildenbrand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements that you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state, to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay. Carmen, any questions?
I have no questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
No questions.
Anyone from the audience wish to address the application 9 Sherwood Road? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Item five, Hudson Valley Building Technologies for 16 Longview Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. And your name, sir?
Rich Venetosi.
Mr. Venetosi, do you swear to, or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements that you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state, to the laws of the state of New York.
Correct.
Okay. I, I believe right now, we're talking about a vacant lot.
Correct.
Okay. And what do you propose and why do you need a variance?
I would like to put a house on that vacant lot.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm here is I am six feet short on the left-hand side.
Okay. And just so I understand, the, the house next to it is also a house that you've built?
Yes. No.
No.
That's a, that's a house that we rehabbed.
Rehabbed, yes. Because you were...
I was before you folks, last year, about this time.
Okay. Okay. Good. Good. My memory is not completely shot.
No, you were right on.
Okay. And so I guess this primarily concerns a, a porch?
Yes.
That off the, the, facing the left side?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Carmen?
Now, where is the driveway going to be for this, this house?
Right in front of the house itself.
Right in front of the house itself?
There's two overhead doors for a drive-in garage under the house.
Okay. So that would be to the right of the other house that you rehabbed, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
When you were before us last time, I think your neighbors had a concern about the house you were rehabbing, about being close to the then-available property line, I think it was, that lot was available to you or to somebody?
That was the lot that I purchased, so that complaint went away.
Okay. After you purchased it, that resolved itself?
Mm.
Okay. And your, your variance is for which side, looking at the front of the house?
Towards the left-hand side, towards 18 Longview.
Towards the house that you renovated?
Correct.
Yeah. He's, he's got 14 feet there?
20.
And 20 is required.
Are these going to be single units? Are you, is this house a rental, these spec houses?
Spec. I'm going to flip.
I'm good.
Okay. If I read the architect's drawing, it's, the, the house is 22 feet wide?
Correct.
Okay. So in, in fact, you've...
I went with smallest footprint.
I was going to say, you, you, what you've got is kind of a narrow...
Right.
...long, but it, but it almost fits onto the lot.
It's, exactly.
Yeah. And so I just wanted to say, I, you know, I give you credit for, you know, designing something that I think is appropriate to, to, you know, a long, narrow lot, which is...
Thanks.
...what it is. Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the...
I have just one...
Oh, sure.
Will you be living in one of these houses?
My wife wants to, but no.
Pardon me?
My wife wants to.
Would you don't?
No.
Okay.
I want to log home myself. But that's another story. I may be coming for you at another time for that.
All right. Well, you know where to find us.
Yes, I do.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. If not, anyone in the audience wish to address 16 Longview Avenue? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Good evening, Manuel Fusco.
Tony, you wanna do the honors?
Mr. Fusco, do you swear to affirm or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state, laws of the state of New York.
Okay, um, there's an existing porch that you're, what, replacing?
Right. So there's an existing porch on the left side of my house, and it's a metal porch, screened-in porch today, and I'm looking to have it replaced. Aesthetically, it needs to be replaced, actually, I had a tree fall on it last summer and put a big hole through the roof, which I had patched up, but I do have a contractor that is, John McKee is my contractor, that I'm going to have, or plan to have, a wood structure put in with a hip roof. The dimensions of the porch would be no closer than the existing porch to the, the property, which I'm asking for a variance, it's five and a half feet from the, the existing property line.
Okay, and do you know how long that porch has been there?
I believe, well, the house is built in nineteen fifty, and I believe this was a metal kit that, like Sears or something sold, so I think it's pretty close to the age of the house, so over sixty years.
Okay, so been there a long time?
Been there a very long time.
Okay, okay. Carmen, any questions?
No, no questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Art?
Yeah, Manny, the runoff is it gonna be the way it is now toward the side lot, or are you gonna put the roof...
The, the pitch of the roof, so I plan to have the runoff towards the front of my property and not towards the...
So you're gonna change the roof line?
Right, there's a little bit of a roof line change, yes. The roof today is like a shed...
Right.
Shed roof.
It looks like an old awning roof.
Right, and I'm gonna have a hip roof put on so that it'll have a little bit of different dimension where I can have the runoff towards the front.
Totally enclosed this time, it'll be fully enclosed, or more of a screen room?
Uh, it'll be screened, but it will be framed so that windows could put, be put in eventually, that would be the plan. So at the bottom, he will have it enclosed, it won't be screened, but the windows itself will be screened.
And that is on a pad, right, it's on a cement pad now?
It's on a, there's a cement pad inside the porch today, but I plan to break that up so that he can put the, the wood, wood deck on, so it's gonna be a wood deck with puddings.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Oops.
Just one more question, is the, is that gonna be like a three-season room?
Uh, not initially, but I would have it framed so that I, I would like to do that someday, but I wouldn't have windows put in at this time, no.
Okay, thank you.
And when I was out there, I noticed there's, there's a pretty substantial hedge...
Right.
That runs along the, the property line...
Right.
Between...
That's right on the property line.
It is, okay, okay.
Right on the property line, it is my neighbor's hedges, which...
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, but...
Right.
So, so from, from your nearest neighbor, this, this deck is, or porch is completely screened, I, I would guess, by that hedge?
Correct, you wouldn't even see it from, from, from their house.
Okay, and, and that hedge stays?
I hope they keep it, because it's a really nice protection for both of us, I think.
Yeah, okay, good. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
The, the proposed deck is, or porch is gonna occupy the same footprint.
Uh, yes, the, I believe the width of it, so it would be no closer to the property line, correct, I think it's eleven, yeah, I think it's eleven feet wide.
And regarding the runoff, that's gonna be diverted because of gutters and downspouts towards the front?
Correct, correct, so I, I would make sure the runoff is on my property and not towards the neighbor's property.
I have no other questions.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address seventy-two Boardman Road? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Duchess S W L L C, my guess is S W stands for Sherwin-Williams, six eighty-four Duchess Turnpike. Okay, gentlemen, you each state your name.
Tom Godfrey.
Chris Lupin with the Chasing Companies.
Mr. Lupin, Mr. Godfrey, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and that any false statements you make are subject to the penalties of perjury pursuant to the state, to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so you were here earlier, and now you're back, and so I think we don't have to go through the whole project, but just kind of briefly, what happened?
Yes, two thousand and sixteen, the zoning board granted three area variances for the project, which replaced the Hollywood Blinds building. Consistent with the Hollywood Blinds, there were two front yard setbacks along Route forty-four and Old Peckham Road, and we also had a rear yard setback. With regards to the front yard setback, you had granted a variance of six point four feet along Duchess Turnpike, eleven point six feet along Peckham Road, and twenty-five point eight feet in the rear. During the course of the planning board review process, we were also asked to add some architectural elements to the corner of the building, which we provided cultural stone. We were under the assumption that based on the section of the zoning code two ten dash thirteen one C, cornices, eaves, and other similar architectural features were allowed into the projections within the yard. However, the zoning administrator made a determination that the cultured stone was not considered an allowed projection, because it was part of the entirety of the wall. The stone itself is two inches, and the backing board is the two inches, so the difference that you're seeing for the variance is the point three to point four feet when you round it up within our requests here. So we're, we're going from the minimum front yard setback, which you granted of six point four, and based upon the as-built survey along Duchess Turnpike, it's six feet. Along Peckham Road, you granted eleven point six feet, now we're at eleven point three, and in the rear, we're at twenty-five point eight originally, and now we're at twenty-five point five. So the variance is that architectural element that was added. We, we did have the option, which we spoke to the municipal director about, was actually removing the stone at the corner of the building, but it would look awkward if you remove it from two corners of the building and not all four corners of the building, and we did this at the direction of the planning board, but once again, we, we thought this was an architectural element.
Okay, Carmen, any questions?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No questions about this, but I do have something I'd like to say.
Yeah.
To hurt you. Those flags that you put out periodically in front of the building? Can't do it in the town. Please keep that in mind.
The flags or the...
Those tall, and the ground flags.
Okay.
Banners.
I'll speak to the manager and make sure that they're removed.
Other than that, it's a beautiful building, but I spotted that the other day, I said, oh no, here we go. They're just not allowed in the town, and it saved you a lot of aggravation in the long run.
Okay, my, my only question is just a clarification, when you talk about the rear lot line, this, that would be to the south?
Yes.
Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Just to comment on the rear, if you remember, the building was actually twenty feet from the rear before, now we're twenty-five point five, so we've decreased that non-conformity.
Yeah, no, I, I, I have, I have no problem at all with that, it was simply when, when I read for, for, for the record, I want to make sure I'm talking about the right...
Understood.
Side of the building, okay, that's, that's all, that's all. I, I, I know that, you know, from your, from your previous time here, that, I mean, I think you've done wonderful job of fitting that building.
It's a beautiful building.
And certainly, it's, it's, looks much, much better than...
Yes.
What was there, so. Anyone from the audience wish to address the application at six eighty-four Duchess Turnpike? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Think we need a break after all this?
I don't know, that's, I, you're, you're, you're the one that's...
Stop.
Okay, we'll keep going.
Let's move on.
We'll keep going. Okay, so we're returning to the top of the agenda. Item number one, Yung Bing Chen, thirty-three Hawk Lane, this is a variance to allow a deck to be located nine feet, seven inches from the side lot line, where twenty feet is required, it's a type-two action, so there's no environmental action that we need to take. Comment?
Pardon me? Oh, you want me to read?
No, not, not just yet.
Well, it's the same, same footprint, it's not going, Amy, it's not even going to the edge of the house.
Okay, okay, so, for, for our attorney's sake, we, I need to formulate some findings here, so let me, let me just do this, correct me, or, or add if you, if you, if you wish. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, the board finds that the, what is in effect a replacement of an existing deck will have no impact on the character of the neighborhood, and it will not be a detriment to nearby properties. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some other method, this is the replacement of an existing deck, to put it in some other location would be, would be difficult. Whether the requested variance is substantial, it, it, it's a variance of almost eleven feet, but it's not substantial in the sense that it, it creates no new encroachment onto the side yards, it simply maintains the status quo. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, the board finds that it will have no impact since, again, it's simply a replacement of an existing structure. And finally, whether the difficulty was self-created, the board finds that because the deck was there and in violation of the code when the owner acquired the property, this difficulty is not self-created. Okay, Carmen, you want to do the motion?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that our chairman just listed.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve item number one's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approved, six, zero. Item two, Michael and Lisa Boom, fifteen Alex Way, this would be a variance to allow a shed to be located behind the house, which is, in what is technically a front yard, again, it's a type-two action, and the county has said this is a matter of local concern. Okay, to, to me, this one's a no-brainer. Okay.
It's almost a hundred feet from the road.
Okay, all right, um, okay. I, I would, I would argue that the board adopts as findings the statements of the applicant, which are found on pages two and three, items one through five on pages two and three, I think there's, I, I think they make a pretty clear case that this shed is gonna be located in a, in a position that'd be almost impossible to see either from, from either front yard for that, for that matter. Okay, so is, is, is the board okay with that?
Yes.
I mean, I think, I think they've, they've answered the, the questions, and I certainly agree with their answers. Okay, Christine?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the chair's findings. In approving this variance, the board adopts the determination set forth, items one through five, found on pages two and three of the application.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item two is approved, six, zero. Item number three, Scott and Christina Greco McPeck at twenty-three Laughen Lane, it's a variance to allow a shed to be located in front of the principal structure, it's a type-two action, and the county has no comment. Okay, discussion?
Well, you know, go ahead, Carmen, go ahead.
Go, go ahead.
No, you go, ladies first.
I would prefer that, that this shed be in the backyard, I, and probably on the left side of the property, because of the...
It's on the left side.
Of the septic.
Left side, left side of the property where it is now, you mean? Or facing the house or facing from the house?
No, it, it, it would be down in the back, you know...
Oh, in the back?
Where, where, where the...
Beekeeper.
The bees are, and I would prefer that, and, and I think the applicant, you know, made some, some good point about why he wants it there, and, and I believe he did agree to, to move it back a couple of feet. So, it's, it's just a preference, I, I would prefer that the sheds, sheds not be visible from the road, but that's all I have to say on that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I really don't have a problem with this. I think it's, this is something of a unique situation in that it's completely screened by the trees and the vegetation on the west side, so nobody's gonna see it from the west. There are some large pine trees on the east, and it is down, down lower, and so I think because of that, it's, it's not gonna stand out the way sheds do in some of the applications where we've got, where, you know, you, you literally can't miss it, it's, it's, it's almost the first thing that you see. I think this, this case is different, and if, if it's a kind of a darker color, it, it will blend in even, even, even better. I think I would urge, we, we, we might even add as a condition that it be put back as, as far as is practical. I mean, I think the applicant offered to do a little digging, or maybe some filling and raise up maybe one, one, one corner to, to be able to get at least some of the shed behind the, the front line of the house, I think that would be important. And then, you know, and I sort of come down to the, you know, basic rule that we have is that we have, we were to balance the benefit to the applicant to, against the, you know, any detriment to, to the neighborhood. I think in this case, the detriment is minimal, nobody from the neighborhood has contacted us or, or spoke tonight. So I really, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this, but...
And I think the challenging topography of that piece of property doesn't, doesn't really leave him much alternative. I didn't see any difficulty with the proposed area, it seemed, in fact, it seemed quite logical.
Can, my fear whenever this happens is that they start driving up and parking in front of the shed, because there is a, it used to be a driveway, but there's a, there's a kind of a roadway, if you will, looks like we use it for dumping firewood and stuff.
Yeah.
Can we make it a...
Well, it would also be considered a front lawn, and I think there's a town ordinance about parking on the front lawn, so maybe that's an issue, has to be discussed at that time if that difficulty arises.
Yeah, there's an existing driveway, and...
On the other side, right?
And you're not supposed to have two driveways, so, but we could, we could, we could add as a condition...
I would like to do that.
That there, that there will be no permanent driveway...
Nope.
To the shed.
Right, no parking in front of the shed. I'd like to do that, then I'm probably okay with it.
Okay, okay, we can, we can put that on as a condition, I think that's, that's reasonable.
And Jim, there is a condition that you're going to extend it back as far as...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it...
He's agreed to that already.
He, he, he's agreed to that, and I think just, you know, I think what, what we're, what we're looking for is a good faith effort here.
Right, and we don't want to disturb the bees. Right, and we don't want to disturb the bees.
No, no. And, I mean, the other thing that I've discovered in dealing with sheds is that it has to be delivered. Okay, so you've got to put it someplace where you can have a fairly good-sized truck back in there. And I don't think a truck can get by on the left side. I'm not sure that the truck could get by on the right side. Even if we went under the right side, we'd still need a variance because of property line issues. So, okay, let me see if I can put together some findings here. Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The board finds that the unusual topographical features of the lot make the proposed location the location that probably will have the least impact on the neighborhood. The shed will be heavily screened to the west, partially screened to the east, and it's going to be located at an elevation lower than the house. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, the board finds that in principle, there probably are other locations, but these other locations would all involve difficulties, some practical and some in terms of zoning requirements. And as a result, that the proposed location is probably the only one that is going to work for the applicant and meet the needs. Whether the requested variance is substantial, it is substantial in the sense that the code prohibits sheds in the front yard. It is less substantial, given the fact that the applicant has been willing to choose a location to minimize the impact. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, the board finds that because this is a standard shed, the environmental impacts will be minimal. And finally, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, the difficulty is self-created in the sense that the applicant wishes to install a shed. The board notes that he has made efforts to minimize the difficulties. Okay. Art, do you want to read the motion, and then we'll put some conditions on it?
You did such a good job. I move the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the chair's findings. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations set forth by the chair in his previous statement.
Okay, and then the approval of this variance is subject to the following conditions. So condition number one is that the applicant will make the best practical efforts to locate the shed as far from the street as possible. Ideally, the back of the shed would be from four to six feet behind the front line of the house. And condition number two is that there will be no permanent driveway nor parking of vehicles in front of the shed. Does that...
Works for me.
That work? Everybody?
Yes.
All right, we're good with that.
Okay. Art made the motion. Christine, you've seconded. Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles, approved, six zero. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item number four, Nancy Hildenbrand, 9 Sherwood Road. It's a variance to allow an existing deck to be 15 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Again, it's a type-two action, and there's no environmental determination that we need to make. Okay, again?
Again, it's there. It's a nice deck. There's no other place for it. It doesn't go past the side of the house.
It's been there for...
Who knows?
Probably a while.
Looks great. Looks great.
It does.
Okay, all right. Let's see, for findings. Okay, all right, I think we can, okay. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, the board finds that decks are common in this neighborhood and that the deck has been there for a long time without producing any problems. Item number two, whether benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the board finds that the current location of the deck is... The board finds that it would be difficult to locate the deck in any other location because of the existing sliding glass doors that give access to the deck. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, the variance would be five feet, and given the location, this is not a serious violation of the code. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions, the board notes that the deck has been in the present location for many years and has created no difficulties. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, this is problematic simply because it's been there a long time, and the present applicant is simply seeking to essentially get the proper variance for a situation that's there for a long time. Okay. All right, let's see. Oh, Larry, okay. Let's see, I can, yeah, okay.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the chair's findings.
Okay, motion to approve item number four had been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, six zero. Item number five, Hudson Valley Building Technologies, 16 Longview Avenue, would grant a variance to allow the construction of a single-family home having a side yard setback of 14 feet where 20 feet is required. It's a type-two action, and the county has no comment.
No, but I would like to say they did a hell of a job on the other house, their renovation. If we all remember what it was.
Well, you can, you see, when I drove that, I thought it was a new house.
Yeah, it's spectacular. I mean, it was pretty much fallen down last time we saw it.
And I like the design.
Yeah, if the next house is nice, I mean, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, to be able to have the garage underneath, so you just drive in and then have that really nice porch above it, very sharp, very sharp.
Congratulate him for that.
And he may live there yet.
Also, nice assets in the neighborhood.
Okay. I've looked over the applicant's comments, and I think basically for findings, I'd like to have us simply adopt the applicant's determinations found items one through five on pages two and three. I would simply add that in number three, the board finds that the... Whether it's, the question is whether or not the variance is substantial. The board finds that the variance is not substantial in the context of the neighborhood and of the lot. We find that the building lot is long and narrow. It would be very difficult to design a single-family home that would not require some kind of a variance. And that in this case, the house is designed in such a way that the only, the variance only is needed because of the side entrance porch, so that in fact, the bulk of the building would not need any variance. So in that sense, this is not a very substantial request. Okay, Tony?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the responses in the application, items one through five. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings and determinations in items one through five as previously mentioned.
Yeah, of the application, and you can just say "as amended" because I think...
We amended number three.
Yeah.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve item five has been made and seconded. There's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved, six zero. Item number six, Manuel Fusco, 72 Boardman Road. This is a variance to allow the replacement of a porch located five feet, six inches from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Again, it's a type-two action, and the county has no comments. Okay. Anybody have a problem with this?
Nope, same thing as before. It's existing footprint.
Okay.
Got no other place to put it.
Yeah.
What are you going to do?
Yeah, it's going to look better.
It's going to look nicer.
Okay. For findings, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the board finds that many houses in the neighborhood have decks, and that this is an existing deck, and so there will be no new impact on the neighborhood. Whether the benefits can be achieved by some method, the board finds that the replacement of the existing deck really can't be done in any other way, except to have a variance for the present location. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's substantial in the sense that the distance to the lot line is going to be five feet, six inches, where 20 feet is required. The board notes that it's not substantial in the sense that it will produce no new impact, and that in fact, the deck is now and will continue to be very thoroughly screened from the nearest neighbors. Whether there will be an adverse impact or effect on the physical and environmental conditions, the board notes that the structure has been there for many years, and if anything, changing the roof to improve the drainage conditions will make it, it will in fact have a beneficial effect on the environmental conditions. And is the alleged difficulty self-created? The difficulty is not self-created because the deck has been there for many years and was installed not by the present owner. Okay. Gus, Carmen, I guess we're back to you.
Okay.
Make the motion on this one.
The only problem is it doesn't have a number.
It's item six.
It is item six.
Yeah.
Then the other one, seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sandy's computer forgot to put a number in.
Duchess is seven. Okay, very good. Here we go. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. Okay. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. And in approving this variance, the board adopts the findings that the chairman just stated.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve item number six has been made and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, six zero. Okay. Item number seven, Duchess Sherman William LLC, 684 Duchess Turnpike. These are three variances to allow a building to be located, A, six feet from the Duchess Turnpike lot line where 15 feet is required, B, 11.3 feet from the Peckham Road lot line where 15 feet is required, and C, 25.5 feet from the rear, that is, the south lot line where 35 feet is required. This is a type-two action, and the county has responded that this is a matter of local concern. Okay, did I get those numbers correct? Okay, all right, I double-checked them, but I just want to make sure. Okay. I would suggest that as findings, we adopt the applicant's extremely detailed answers to the questions, and these answers are located on pages, it's items one through five, on pages three to six of the application.
I agree. I'm good with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah, they could have done a much nicer job.
Yeah. Okay, so Christine?
Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the chair's findings. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations set forth in items number one through five on pages three through six of the application.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item seven, approved, six zero. Okay. Okay. All right. The only other item on our agenda is a request from the planning board that they serve as the lead agency on the Planet Wings Edition at 661 Duchess Turnpike. I have a copy of the preliminary site plan that, that's been filed with the planning board. In a nutshell, if, if you go to the corner of, well, it's Route 44 and, and what's that, Burnett Boulevard where Planet Wings is, what they want to do is to build a, an addition to that building essentially behind it, and it would be about half the size of the current building. So, so the, the building would be about 50%...
Going back toward Kmart?
Yeah, going, yeah, straight, straight north. And the idea is that when they have that new addition, Planet Wings will move into that smaller space, and the larger space where they are now will be renovated and rented out, and they indicate that Verizon has an interest in locating there. So, I took a quick look at it. A lot of the issues that are going to be involved in the environmental have to do with floodplain issues.
Basin there.
Because, because the creek is right there. They may have to come back to us for some lot line issues, so we, we may very well see this again, but I don't think there's any point. I mean, we don't want to be lead agent for the environmental review.
No.
No, okay, so...
I don't.
I, I move that the ZBA agree with the request from the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board that it serve as lead agency for the Planet Wings Edition at 661 Duchess Turnpike.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approved. And finally, we have come to the end of the agenda, and once again, we have nothing adjourned to the next meeting, so...
Yeah.
How good are we?
Once, once again, being very efficient.
Very.
Cooperative neighbors.
Very relaxing night, everything.
That's right. Okay.
Can we miss? Do we have to close this?
We, I'm afraid we do, so is there a vote to adjourn?
No vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.